I call this meeting of the Bloomington Board of Education to order. Today is Monday, April 29th, and I invite you all to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is an agenda that is available on the side counter there and was distributed board members prior to the meeting, and I'm going to now ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
Moved and second, approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. And the next item then on our agenda, we always look forward to this opportunity when we have this part of our business meeting, is a recognition of students, staff, and public. And I see we have a good-sized audience today. I'm glad to welcome you for the purpose at this point of hearing about the accomplishments of some of our students, and for that purpose, I would like to call upon Dennis Kane, Human Rights Commissioner with the City of Bloomington, who will provide some introductions for our first item, which is a Human Rights Commission Diversity Day T-shirt Design Award.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure this evening to give you a little background on this T-shirt design process. And annually, the Human Rights Commission, in conjunction with the school district's Office of Educational Equity, we have collaborated for several years in providing support for the development of Career, or I'm sorry, development of Diversity Day at both schools, and it is something the students look forward to, as well as the community, they look forward to this as well. This year's event is going to feature, first of all, I should say it will run from April 29th through May 3rd, and it will feature, for the students, several things. They will participate in cultural information booths, and they will complete a piece run from Jefferson to Kennedy, and they will also attend a presentation by Jane Elliott. And some of you in the audience may know Jane because she was responsible for developing something, a perspective on diversity, that is called Blue Eyes Brown Eyes. And she has furthermore developed a workshop that is called Power, Perception, and Prejudice. And this is a very powerful presentation that she will present at both Jefferson and at Kennedy. And all the students will be engaged in that. Part of the activities for Diversity Day has involved the T-shirt process, and we've encouraged students from both schools to submit their presentations, that is, design, and the Human Rights Commission, which I am a member, has had the privilege of looking at these designs and coming to a conclusion of which one we felt was the best. And we have a winner again this year, as we have done in the past. We've done this for several years. The criteria that we follow is basically, we judge for completeness, we judge for originality, and we judge for how well the design adheres to peace and diversity, which are the two main themes that we suggest, that they consider. Tonight, I would like to invite the winner, Diana Chung, and Assistant Principal Deb Holman, to join me on the podium. And as they are stepping forward, I will indicate to you that Diana has already been recognized by the city council at its meeting on the 14th of April, and she has been awarded a $100 check from RBCU, and gift certificates from Chipotle for her family. So that has been their token of appreciation for her contributions to the community. So with her work and the others who had submitted their designs, it has been presented at the Civic Plaza since March 23rd. So I want you to welcome Diana, and maybe she'd like to say a word or two? Please.
I would just like to say thank you to the Bloomington Human Strike Commission for choosing my T-shirt logo design for Diversity Day. When I was working on it, I really didn't think that I would be chosen winner, and it was something that I was doing for fun, so when I got the letter in the mail, I was more than ecstatic. So, thank you again for this award.
Good evening, School Board and other honored guests. A nice crowd today. Thank you for being here. If you have a chance, on Friday, both of the high schools, Kennedy and Jefferson, will be having Diversity Day, and it's a pretty exciting thing. We have the run in the morning, we have a great speaker in the morning at Kennedy, in the afternoon, this is Jane Elliott at Jefferson, and the booths and flag hallway at Jefferson are always fun, and if you stop by, you might see students representing various cultures of their countries of origin, such as Italy, Cambodia, Ireland, Mexico, Germany, Hawaii, India, and many times you can get a taste of food, or you can get a Hannah tattoo, it's really fun. We also have booths from groups such as Pacer Institute, the Human Rights Commission Robotics, GSA, and Young Life. So if you have a chance, come on over, it's really fun. Thank you.
In closing, I would like to also suggest to you, I have some material here that I will leave. This is an invitation on the part of the Human Rights Commission. We are working on a Dred Scott commemoration, a refocusing on the importance of Dred Scott. This is a gathering scheduled for May 22nd at the Civic Plaza at 6:30. And featuring in this evening and this honor, we are going to be honored by the great-great-granddaughter Lynn Jackson, who lives in St. Louis. She's coming up to work with us and present a number of things that you might be interested in. So without a lot more to say, but I just simply want to give you this heads-up, that it's here, and it's going to be happening in about three weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dennis Kane. Appreciate it. And congratulations Diana. Glad you could be here tonight to accept our acknowledgement. Next item on our agenda is the DECA State Competition Award Winners, and I would like to call forward Eric Ressler, Jefferson High School Business Teacher, who will introduce our students.
Thank you for having us here. I'm going to introduce Trevor Punai and Mike Blazinin tonight. They both competed in the Business Financial Services category at the state competition. Mike placed first, and Trevor placed fifth. Mike was not able to go to the national competition, but Trevor went to the national competition. We just got back yesterday. So I'm going to let Trevor talk a little bit about DECA in general, and then Mike will talk about the Business Financial Services a little bit.
All right. So as Eric Ressler said, I'm the chapter president of the Bloomington DECA chapter, and we just came back from Anaheim, California, and that went pretty well, and the weather was great, as usual. I can't really complain about today, you know, today was pretty nice. So basically, what is DECA? DECA is an organization, business organization, that kids from around the world compete on the local, state, and national levels, and it encompasses a wide array of events, per se. So first, you have the written events, which are like 11 to 30-page papers, and you can write about entrepreneurship, international business plans, and, you know, many, many different fields of study. And then you have role plays. So these role plays consist of 100-point tests, and then two role plays, which are essentially scenarios that the judge gives you, and they're problems that a company has to solve. And you, as like a financial analyst, per se, has to take 10 minutes to prepare a presentation for a judge to basically solve their problem, and then you have a 10-minute presentation in which you pitch your solution to the judge, which acts like the CEO of a company. And then you have other events, like the stock market game and other team events, and, you know, these events encompass areas such as finance, accounting, healthcare, hospitality, and tourism, and sports, entertainment, marketing. And yeah, so it encompasses a wide range of events. DECA's not necessarily, you know, the most widely-known club, but, you know, I think it's a fantastic club, and I hope it continues strong. Thank you.
So as Mr. Ressler and Trevor mentioned, I'm Mike Blazinin, obviously I got first, and I'm just going to talk about the Business Financial Series. So the Business Financial Series is an individual event, which means that you go in alone and you do everything on your own, and as Trevor sort of mentioned, they hand you a one-page readout of a business situation. So for example, one of ours was a company that was facing declining business, and they had to restructure their workforce. And so you get 10 minutes to prepare a presentation, and this company was trying to cut $9 million over the next five years, and so you had to figure out how to change wages and insurance structures and all that sorts of stuff to save the money, and you get 10 minutes to prepare that, and then you go in and you do a 10-minute presentation, just sitting across the table from a judge like they were the CEO, and then obviously the judges rank you, and that's how you're graded.
I'm Michael. Trevor, I'm glad you could be here. Are your parents in the audience? We like to also give acknowledgement to parents who have a lot to do with students being able to participate, whether it's driving or supporting in other ways financially, and we like to provide that recognition, and I will add then with the next group we're going to bring forward, which are Skills USA State Competition Award winners, and I would like to call upon Scott Etzel, who is the Kennedy High School Business Teacher and the Business Skills USA Advisor, to introduce us to our student winners.
Good evening, everybody, and I never gets tired of bringing the red jackets to the school board meeting. We've been doing this for about 10 years. I've been the lead advisor now for five. We had about 12 kids compete in five or six competitions. I'm going to give an overview real quick, and then we're going to let a couple of state officers come up and talk more. But this is sort of like DECA, but it's a little bit more. It's a Career and Technical Education Student Association organization, and throughout the year, it's not just this competition. In the fall, I took five students to a leadership conference. They did everything we would do in a nine-month school year in three and a half days with people they never met before, high school and college and advisors. So we did that. We also had three students run for state office, and there's only seven state officers, and Kennedy is fortunate to have three of them. And then, right before the holiday season, we have a Project Santa Community Service Project, which we've now done for eight years with the Harriet Tubman Center in Minneapolis. So we competed in that, and the Bloomington community was very generous with emails throughout the district and parent support. We raised over $500 to make that happen, and so very grateful. So I'm going to call on Pauline, and Danella, and Belle, our three state officers, and they're going to talk a little bit.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Danella Sahadio, and we're here representing Skills USA. Skills USA is a leadership organization of students, teachers, and industrial representatives working together to ensure that America has a skilled workforce. And I'll let my fellow officers introduce you to the rest of our team.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Belle Sinshey. I'm a treasurer for the Skills USA Minnesota state officers. For this year, winners, we were bringing the opening and closing ceremony representing the state of Minnesota to the national convention. And we have here, there's Amy Ho, Vi Duong, Alaina, Quinn, Isabel Furco, Pauline Anquari, Danella Sahadio, and myself. We're also bringing two more members to the national conventions, Abigail Boadu and Madusu Jawari. Although they're not able to be here with us, I'd like to honor them as well.
Hi, my name's Pauline Anquari. I am the high school historian. As Mr. Ressler said, there's three out of the seven of us are from Kennedy, which is a big achievement for us. We didn't think we'd all make it, but then the day came and we did, which is pretty happy, because we can all carpool together. But then, when it comes to being a state officer, there's a couple of things that we do. We kind of, we are the kind of the backbone for the high school to help Ms. Jen, who's our state executive director, and we help her, and we represent all the students at national convention at the delegates, and we represent them in meetings, and we think of the best for Minnesota as a whole. Minnesota has a pretty big Skills USA chapter in around Minnesota, and it's, we're known at nationals very well. People know Minnesota, see the pin, we want the Minnesota pin, which goes pretty fast. And as state officers, it's kind of, it's great to be a state officer and to represent Kennedy, and to show that we can do what we set our minds to. So as state officers, we want to say thank you for inviting us here today.
I would just like to add a couple of things. As we go through the school year, we rely on sources of money that aren't part of any budget. We have a can cage at Kennedy that helps, and the price of aluminum just went up, so their checks look good. But the Education Foundation of Bloomington helped us in the fall. We also have a request for them to help us as we go to nationals, and we'll be bagging groceries sometime next month at Cub, and so all that helps to get their way to nationals. So thanks for the support.
Thank you for your leadership, Mr. Etzel, and congratulations to our students. Do we have any parents in the audience of our students we're recognizing? Please stand up. We'd like to applaud you as well. Would you like to stand up for recognition? All right. Thanks for all you do.
Don't mind me, folks.
Board Member Dick Bergstrom is handing out recognition certificates to our awardees tonight. Thank you. And next, we will learn more about the Future Leaders Program that's been implemented in Bloomington with the great good help of our friends, the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. And I would like to now call on Cheryl Martin, a business teacher at Kennedy, who will introduce our other adult guests and have more information about the program, including some student participants, and I guess we're going to see something as well on the screen to inform us all more about our involvement with Future Leaders Program. So, Ms. Martin, please.
Good evening, Chairman Culver, members of the school board, Superintendent Fujitaki, we're glad to be here this evening. We're here to give you an update on the Bloomington Future Leaders Program, which has evolved significantly over the last few years. This program is a collaboration between Bloomington Schools Business Education Program and the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. And I'd like to introduce Maureen Scale and Fowler, who will introduce the rest of the committee that works on this program, and then will give our students that have joined us a chance to share their experiences with you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Mr. Chair, members of the school board, Superintendent Fujitaki, thank you so much for the opportunity for us to come this evening and present to you. This is a program of the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, and a real true partnership and collaboration with Bloomington Jefferson and Kennedy High Schools in the school district. This truly shows what can happen when you put resources together and collaborate to do good things in our community. This program, we are now year three, we're just finishing our third year of the program, and I'm so pleased to report that every year, this program gets better. Our team, if you will, which I'll be introducing shortly, has done a phenomenal job. The chamber and its resources have come to the table to ensure the program's success. The Bloomington Chamber Board of Directors fully supports education and workforce development as one of its very top priorities. We feel so important to that priority that we will start, we will continue, and we'll put more resources into this program as we move forward. I would like to take the opportunity to introduce our team, and I'll start with Kate down here. Kate is with College Advisors. She actually is College Connectors. Kate is actually taking over as the chair of the subcommittee. This is part of the Community Outreach Committee of the Bloomington Chamber, but because of the level of programming that we are now doing for the Future Leaders, it has evolved into pretty much its own standing committee. We have our teachers, Eric Ressler from Jefferson, Cheryl Martin, and Dan Gazner from Kennedy High Schools, and then our chamber members, and there is one other chamber member, Adam. Adam, can you stand up? And these people dedicate their time and resources to help us deliver this program. Debbie Belfry, I also want to bring to your attention, she is the representative from the school district, and I want to thank you for allowing Debbie to participate in this program. She has played such a critical role to ensure its success. Debbie could not be here tonight due to her father passing away, but she has been instrumental of this program being able to be so successful. Anna Stinson, our office manager, is another staff person who is engaged in this program, as well as Jolene Tibbital Boyd, who is the chair of the Community Outreach Committee. So I will now turn it back to Cheryl.
Just want to touch on the goals of the program. Really, the whole focus of our program is about enhancing the student learning experience by giving students the opportunity to interact and engage and work with members of the business throughout Bloomington and surrounding areas. And there's really four main areas that we really focus on. First of all, we've planned together some chamber events where we are actually having the students work with, getting a chance to interact and work with members of the businesses around the community, and those are really more like educational workshops, and each one has a theme and some educational goals, and we'll touch on the two that we did this year. We also were able to connect a number of our students with mentors and get them to participate in an intern experience, where a mentor guided their learning experience, and a couple of our students tonight will share their intern experiences. We, as Eric mentioned, we have a DECA program, both Kennedy and Jefferson have a DECA program, and so we can, we've utilized business people both for judging our events, as well as coaching students to develop the skills that they need to be competitive at the DECA events. Overall, we just really feel that being, allowing the students to learn in the real world, per se, with the advisement of business professionals truly enhances the student learning experience.
So we have very targeted results of this program. The first is to provide opportunities for the students and businesses of Bloomington and the South Metro to build strong relationships. Through our efforts, we do seek to increase community involvement opportunities. We have business volunteers that conduct mock interviews for Jefferson and Kennedy students, and these are crucial because it's, for many students, the first time they actually go through a formal interview process and actually get feedback on their interviewing skills, so they really enjoy that. The Future Leaders Program also improves the learning environment by supporting the student preparation for the state and regional DECA competitions. Business volunteers will also come into the classrooms and make presentations in their specialized area, and this gives those students that real-world experience and more opportunities to ask questions and build some relationships with those business professionals. And then internship and mentorship opportunities are very important at this level, and we have a huge amount of students who are connecting with chamber volunteers to do mentorship or internship opportunities. Finally, we'll also work together, the students and business volunteers, to support local nonprofits through volunteer service throughout Bloomington and the South Metro. And then finally, this program does increase the visibility of the business and marketing education program, and we do seek improvements for that program based on member feedback along the way.
I want to bring to your attention the investment that the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, as well as its members, have invested into the Bloomington Future Leaders Program. And this is just a snapshot from this year's program. Our program will end at the end of May. We will run this program in conjunction with the school year. So our next program will kick off in the fall 2013 into the spring of 2014. But I want you to see the investment that is made here from the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce and its business partners. Throughout the course of the program, we put on various conferences, events, the Bloomington Hilton over on France Avenue, Jim Wavigal, a board member on the chamber board, and just an overall strong supporter of the Bloomington Future Leaders Program. The Mall of America, RBCU, all have come to the table financially to ensure that we can deliver on this program. If you go through, the total sponsorship dollars that are invested in the Bloomington Future Leaders Program is over $10,000, close to $11,000. The volunteer hours and the hours invested into this program is another very important factor that I would like to bring to your attention as well. These hours are hours invested by the business community. They are done on their time. They leave their office, they leave their companies to help invest in our future. And I want, I want to really publicly recognize our chamber members who are committed to this program. 286 hours total. Two hundred and eighty-six hours total. That is almost thirty-six days of committed time and resources that the Bloomington business community has given to this program. On this slide, you can see the numerous participating businesses that have come to the table to ensure the program's successes. And I'm not going to list all of them. I believe you do have a copy of the PowerPoint. But again, I would like to publicly recognize all of these businesses. If it weren't for the businesses' support, we would not be able to deliver on what I feel one of the chamber's most important and successful programs.
All right. We'd like to just highlight our achieved results in a few of the events that we had this year. We kick off the program each year with a Meet the Chamber organization where Maureen and some of the other team come out and actually enlighten the students and share with them, you know, the basics of what the Chamber, Bloomington Chamber of Commerce is and what their goals are. And they get a chance to meet several chamber members. We then kind of focus on helping to encourage students to volunteer in the community. And one of our first events is the Bloomington Heritage Days. We had a number of students that came out and worked at different booths and were assigned to different roles. And then we, the next event was, we actually partnered with a number of chamber members to go out and rake leaves for the home project. We raked that, the picture on the left, over sixty bags. It took us many hours, but it was a wonderful project. And I know that the students really walked away with a good feeling about helping their community.
Following that, then, we like to say, every month, we try to have some type of activity going on. In November ninth of this past year, we had a great conference called the Networking and Communication Conference. We brought in Stevie Ray, who runs his own improv thing, to teach the kids about how to network. Taught them how to walk, how to handshake, how to do all these things, be professional, be confident in who you are. It's a great experience. They have roundtable discussions with business people. Both schools are involved in it, and it's a really great chance to teach these kids just about networking, meeting people, telling your story, and making a kind of interesting story about what, who you are versus just, my name is this and I work here. And being able to just get out there, reach out. I think all of us will agree that a lot of times, it's not always how much you know, but who you know, that also does help you quite a bit. And so that was a really great conference on November ninth.
Just one more point related to that. I, that was the first time we had done a conference like that, and we were really impressed with how many students really did go out there and work hard to find connections for their internships and network. So it was, I think, a very successful conference. In February, we held a second conference at the Hilton, and this one was focusing on adversity and diversity. And our speaker, keynote speaker, was Coach Larry McKenzie and his student manager, Nick Anderson. And both of them have had challenges in their lives, and they spoke about how they have worked to overcome the adversity in their lives. And we followed that up with a number of small group breakouts where students touched on a number of business topics related to diversity in marketing, customer service, human resource issues, all kind of revolving around diversity in the workplace.
And then in April, it was just actually the last week, we just got together and we went through and we call it Adopt a Park. And we went through and we cleaned fourteen parks here in the area, raking up, you know, picking up garbage, raking. And like I said, all the kids were involved from both schools. And then we all got together at the end and had a little social time. And like I said, just showing the kids how easy it is, just when you're, the power of numbers and just going out there and just doing something little. And it was even interesting, we had people that were out there seeing us and thanking us for taking care of the parks. And one guy was actually really surprised to see, wanted to know who we were and everything. So it was really nice.
And we had a beautiful day.
Oh yeah. And then in January, and actually, we have January through May, actually, May sixteenth at Kennedy, we are going to do our big last kind of project with the kids called, where we do mock interviews, where they get a twenty-minute interview and ten minutes of feedback. Eric also over at Jefferson does this. He does it throughout his each try with different groups of kids that come in. And at the same time, we're trying to teach kids, as they learn to network, how important it is to do an informational meeting, or just an interview, I should say, about a career that they're interested in. Why not go out there and talk to the people who are experts, who have already been out there, who have made mistakes perhaps, and being able to find out those resources and talk to those students about what's going on? And it's been really a great, and it's teaching kids that, you know, you, if you don't know someone, you have to start thinking about that. And who can be a contact, who can help you out, who, and it's been, like I say, both those have been great experiences. And the business people that have been involved have really enjoyed these two, being able to be in our mock interviews.
So I guess I'd really like to take this moment to thank all the members of the chamber that have helped us throughout this year and that we've collaborated with and partnered with to bring these great opportunities to the students here in Bloomington. Because day in, day out, through the student reflections, through the student conversations I have, so many students have expressed their gratitude for having a program like this in our schools. And here tonight, we actually have three students that have been a part of the program this year, and they would like to share their experiences with you.
Well, I get the privilege of introducing Jack Gale and Kelsey Keel, who are seniors from Kennedy High School, to tell you a little bit about their experiences. And Maddy Champa from Jefferson High School is a senior, and she is going to tell about her experiences as well.
Well, I guess I get the privilege of reintroducing myself. I'm Jack Gale, and I'm a senior at Bloomington Kennedy. And I've been fortunate enough to take part in the Bloomington Future Leaders Program this entire school year. And this year, our program at JFK has worked in collaboration with a similar program at Jefferson. I feel that this collaboration has been very beneficial for both parties, as it has done well to alleviate the Kennedy-Jefferson split that we see too often here in Bloomington. It's brought a lot of kids together who share very similar interests and drive, and allowed them to work together and reflect with one another on subjects that come up in their daily lives. Together, we were fortunate enough to take part in two informational seminars that Mr. Gazner and Ms. Martin spoke about earlier. Each seminar exhibited different issues, situations, and opportunities that are integral parts of the professional world. As I said, our first seminar was led by a man named Stevie Ray, and this is a man who's made a career on being personable and presentable, so he tried to help us in that regard. He taught us how to excel in interpersonal situations. It can range as far from business conferences to interviews, even to business tailgate parties, anything. He taught us how to present our best selves. We came out of there with a strong understanding as to how to use our language and our personability to make people want us in their presence. They wanted to hire us, they wanted to be around us, and that was the main point of that entire day, and I feel he did a fantastic job conveying that to the students. Our second seminar was led by Nick Anderson, a senior at Holy Angels Academy, and his head coach of basketball, Larry McKenzie. They both shared stories of incredible adversity. Nick actually suffered from cerebral palsy from a young age, and he made it as far as to play in a high school basketball game. So that really holds a lot of weight, and that adds an awful lot of gravity to something like that. And they taught us a lot about how to handle adversity. Now, ours may not be as intense as theirs, but we were able to better ourselves and learn how to overcome challenges at hand. Coach McKenzie's story talked about expectation struggles, and some of us may do that in our personal lives. And he, as well as Nick, gave us ways to handle that, taught us fantastic coping skills so we can better prepare ourselves for those situations. Because who knows, in the professional world, you may come up against adversity and need to know how to handle it. Holistically, these seminars not only taught us valuable skills, but also connected us with a great network of intelligent and experienced professionals, such as Mr. Filipich in the front row there. They hooked us up with a lot of fantastic Chamber of Commerce reps and various professionals throughout Bloomington. We were able to converse and relate with very credible sources who have actually seen the situations we talked about in our small groups. These folks have actually lived it, experienced it, dealt with it. Maybe they've made the mistakes, maybe they've crushed it and hit it out of the ballpark, who knows? But they could give us a little insight. Because if there's one thing we lack of students, it's experience. And people like Mr. Filipich could give us a fantastic leg up on the competition, if you will, by sharing their experiences with us. In summation, I feel that Bloomington's internship and mentorship program is a great option for really driven students. I hope to see a continued proliferation of this group, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening.
All right. So I'm Kelsey Keel, and I'm a senior from Kennedy. And as a senior, we all know, like, we have to prepare for college, and next question is, where are you going? And what are you going to do? And a lot of people are undecided. And this program really helped me decide that, and I didn't want to go to college undecided because I'd go through a lot of classes and money through that. So I didn't want to do that. So I wanted to figure out what I had to do. So talking to Ms. Martin here, I know she, I told her I wanted to help people out, kind of interested in the medical program here. And she got Dana Quinn, who's a director from Fairview-Soutdale Hospital there, and I got to, he set me up with all the job shadows there. I job shadowed at Fairview-Soutdale Hospital there. So I got to shadow in the neuro field, the orthopedics, the NICU, and the respiratory therapy program there. So I got to see the whole deal, like, the real deal. And it was crazy, and it helped me really decide, like, what I wanted to do. Like, it got me the whole experience about being a nurse and what it was. So I just got to follow every nurse, like, once a week for four weeks, and it was really fun. It was such a good time, and like, it just made me realize how important it was to do this and made sure it, like, was the real deal, like, make it or break it type thing. I had to do it, so it really got me thinking about my future and how happy I am with my decision. And so next year, I'll be going to St. Cloud and going to be doing the nursing program there, and I'm excited to become a future nurse and hopefully help you guys out in the hospital.
My name's Maddy Champa, and I'm from Jefferson, as Mr. Wrestler had said. I am attending St. Mary's University in Winona next year to major in marketing with a minor in Spanish. And I've been part of the intern-mentorship program for all of this year, so my senior year, and I have enjoyed every single minute that I have been in it. I have learned so much, ranging from small little things to huge things. For example, this trimester alone, I organized and ran a sock drive all by myself with the help of my mentor, kind of getting me on the right direction. And from there, as of today, I've raised over four hundred and fifty-six pairs of socks, and that is still counting. My first trimester, kind of jumping back, I interned at Masonic Home and focused on marketing. And then this trimester and last trimester, I was at the Shakopee Area Catholic Churches, focusing on marketing and the nonprofit work as well. When I tell people that I'm part of this as a high schooler, they cannot believe that this is one of my classes and how prepared I am for my future, as Jack had mentioned about experience, that I have this experience as a high schooler, going in a whole step ahead of everyone else. With that, this program has totally helped me get ready to thrive for my future and succeed as a marketer.
Again, I'd like to thank the school board for allowing us to come this evening and to present. I am really looking forward to next year's program. You're going to see a substantial investment into the Bloomington Future Leaders Program. A couple of hints, you've heard the words "South Metro," "South Metro." Our chamber members represent beyond Bloomington into Richfield, Eden Prairie, and we want to be able to work with our other partners, with the other schools in the South Metro area, to really have a strong viable program that helps all of us achieve what we are here for today. So again, thank you very much for your time, and we're going to look forward to coming back next year at this time and to report out again on the successes. And again, I want to just compliment the teachers. We meet once a month, Thursday mornings, at seven AM at the chamber offices, and they are there without fail. And I can't thank them enough and our chamber volunteers for their time commitment, because without them and the district's support, we would not be able to deliver on this program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I want to thank, thank you, Ms. Allen Feller, for being here tonight, and Cheryl Martin for leading presentation as well. I'm sorry that Debbie Belfry could not be here tonight. But I want to comment on how thorough the presentation was and how well it gave us a picture of what is going on with that program. So I thank you for the prepared overhead here with the PowerPoint presentation, and also the student testimony really gives us a great idea of how they benefit from this program. So we're very grateful to the chamber for its continued sponsorship, and thank you for being here tonight.
Tim, may I just mention, thank you, thank you. I have been a chamber ambassador for years, well, a diplomat before that. So it's been so wonderful working together, and especially being in Bloomington. I have some friends on school boards where they represent four communities or five or something like that, and it's been so wonderful to be in Bloomington, where we work with our city and our chamber for our kids. Way to go.
Is there anyone in the audience who is here in order to fulfill a social studies class requirement? Would you please come forward and introduce yourselves and tell us what class you are in that you're visiting with us tonight?
Hi, everybody. My name is Jefferson, and I'm doing this for government class, twelfth grade.
Hi again, I'm Diana, and I'm from Ms. Abby's government class, which, and I'll be staying to proctor what the topics are.
Thank you, both of you. A requirement of our twelfth-grade government classes is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that they may attend include city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, so this is in fulfillment of an essential standard to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. So at the close of the session or after one hour, whichever is shorter, and I think it's going to be the one hour, you may ask for a signature on the agenda from tonight's meeting from anyone along this wall at my left-hand side, and they will be glad to sign an agenda as evidence that you've been here and fulfilled your requirements. So thank you again. This is the time in our meeting for anyone who wants to address the school board to come forward. I checked our signup sheet, we don't have any signed up. Is there someone who would like to speak to the school board that did not register? All right, seeing no interest in addressing us, I will move ahead then to the remainder of our agenda, starting with the Part A Agenda items. Part A is labeled Board Business. It's routine matters that generally don't require debate and discussion. Do I hear motion for approval of Part A Agenda?
Shall move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Part A Agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And it carries. And Part B Agenda then is, beginning with bid awards on Jefferson High School improvements. And our staff person at the table will be our executive director of finance, Rod Zivkovich, will be assisting us through several items of business now that are going to deal with our financing options. Mr. Zivkovich.
Your resolution?
Yes, please.
Result of the School Board of Independent School District, number two seventy-one. Number one, accept the Bloomington Electric Company Bloomington, Minnesota bid of $1,441,000 to provide electrical improvements at Jefferson High School. And two, accept the A&amp;L Construction Incorporated Maple Grove, Minnesota bid of $124,800 to provide demolition and general construction improvements at Jefferson High School. And three, accept the Minnesota Acoustics Incorporated Maple Grove, Minnesota bid of $107,500 to provide acoustical ceiling improvements at Jefferson High School. And four, accept the Breath Zenson Fire Protection Incorporated St. Joseph, Minnesota bid of $40,470 to provide fire protection improvements at Jefferson High School. And five, accept the Grazini Brothers and Company Eagan, Minnesota bid of $34,500 to provide porcelain tile improvements at Jefferson High School. And six, accept the Haldeman Home Incorporated Minneapolis, Minnesota bid of $6,275 to modify the existing center roll curtain for the gymnasium at Jefferson High School. And seven, approve the contracts with above vendors to accomplish this work.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Zivkovich.
Chair Culver, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, I'm here tonight
Chair Culver, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, I'm here tonight. This is part of our all facility summer projects for 2013-14. As you can see, this is quite a lengthy resolution. What we're trying to do is combine all the projects for one school, or at least the majority of the contracts for one school into one resolution to have the board be able to address it all at once. But this is for, again, our 2013-14, all facility projects that the board approved and the state approved prior.
Thank you. Any questions, clarification?
One question, and that is, on a couple of these, we only got one bid. And I'm wondering if our consultants were comfortable with the amounts of those bids?
Yes, they were. A couple of them, I guess the last one you read was that they're pretty much the only one that does that type of work. So we had a lot of people come out for the bid process, but there were just a couple items that people just didn't come and bid. And I think in your packet also too, there was a letter from Kraus Anderson, our construction managers, that were recommending all these bids.
Any other questions? So this is a project that's in a long-range plan, long-term plan, and it's funded from an existing resource, the Alternative Facilities Fund we have on our hand.
Correct. It'll be funded either out as our pay as you go levy or bonds that we're, we'll be talking about a little later tonight.
Very good. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. It carries. The next item is bid awards for Westwood Elementary School improvements.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Be it resolved at the School Board of Independent School District Number 271. One, accept the Northern Air Corporation, Vadniss Heights, Minnesota bid of $2,800,000 to provide mechanical improvements at Westwood Elementary School. And two, accept the A&amp;L Construction Inc., Maple Grove, Minnesota bid of $1,129,000 to provide demolition and general construction improvements at Westwood Elementary School. And three, accept Master Electric Company Inc., Savage, Minnesota bid of $382,520 to provide electrical improvements at Westwood Elementary School and approve the contracts with the above vendors to accomplish this work. Second.
Moved Director Bottalata, seconded Director Bush. Is there some further information that would help us?
This is another project for the summer. As we start going through our different buildings, we're starting with our oldest building being Westwood. And these are just the projects that are planned for Westwood for the summer.
And again, long-range plan and available funds.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, reactions? All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And it carries. We have another item, that a bid award for masonry rehabilitation, Oak Grove Middle School. Is there a motion? Yes. Director Bergstrom.
Yes. Beat resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271. One, accept the A.J. Spangers Company Incorporated, Brooklyn Park, Minnesota bid of $150,050 to provide masonry rehab at Oak Grove Middle School. And two, approve the contract with A.J. Spangers Company Incorporated to accomplish this work.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Director Zivkovich, or Mr. Zivkovich, please. This is another project for the summer. It's not a full-fledged school project. This is more of just the outside envelope that needs to have some work done over the summer. As Chair Culver mentioned before, this is the same funding through the levy and bonding.
All right, any further information? Mark?
Just one question from this one. So you've got three bids that are all pretty close together to the winning bid. And then you've got three bids that are twice, twice that. Any conversation with the consultants about what's happening there?
I think the three that came in lower were trying to be more competitive in getting the business. They weren't surprised they're seeing a lot of that out there. A lot of the companies that are the higher bidders right now are ones that are, if they get the business, I mean, they're busy right now. And so they're not as aggressive as some.
And these, the winning bid is a company that our consultant is familiar with? Okay. Thank you.
On all of them, both of the prior ones also, the, either we've worked with those companies before, or our consultants have said that they've worked with them in other districts and are comfortable with them.
Thanks. Hey, thank you for assuring us you've done due diligence. Are there other questions, other reactions then? We'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. It carries. Our next item is a resolution providing for the sale of general obligation alternative facilities bonds, Series 2013A. Chair, please. Director Hibbs?
Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 271, State of Minnesota as follows. Number one, at a meeting held January 28, 2013, the board adopted a resolution stating its intention to issue its fully registered general obligation bonds, hereafter the bonds pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 123B.59 subdivision 3 and Chapter 475 as amended to fund the costs of certain projects included in its 10-year facility plan approved by the board and the Commissioner of Education and related financing costs. Two, notwithstanding any contrary provision in said January 28, 2013 resolution, the clerk and executive director of finance and support services are authorized and directed to receive all proposals presented in conformity with this resolution and the terms of proposal contained in the official statement, the terms of which are ratified and confirmed in all respects, and to approve on behalf of the district the sale of the bonds to the party submitting the most favorable proposal, the purchaser, provided that the true interest rate on such proposal does not exceed 3.75% per annum and a favorable recommendation to accept said proposal is received from Ellers and Associates Incorporated. The clerk and executive director of finance and support services are authorized and directed to endorse an acceptance on both copies of the most favorable proposal and to send one copy to the purchaser. Number three, upon approval of the sale of the bonds by the clerk and executive director of finance and support services, the board will meet at its next regularly scheduled meeting to adopt the necessary approving resolution as prepared by the district's bond council. Number four, except as otherwise provided herein, the provisions of the January 28, 2013 resolution are ratified and confirmed.
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Director Bottalata.
Chair Culver, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. First, I'd like to introduce Gary Olson from Ellers and Associates for the viewing public and also the public in the audience. Just a little background of Ellers. Ellers has been with the district for about 15 years as our finance consultant regarding levying versus bonding and also referendums. Gary himself has been with the organization since 1999 and has 22 years of experience with the Department of Education before that. They're involved in a majority of our decision-making of any financial changes we make within the district. So tonight, having Gary here for any questions, we'll open it to questions at this time.
Are there any questions, board members? As you heard in the resolution, this has been discussed and approved in concept at an earlier meeting. Are you prepared to move forward with a vote? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. It carries. Then we have a further resolution, also relating to our bonded indebtedness. Resolution providing for sale of general obligation school building refunding bonds, Series 2013B. Do I hear motion? Director Bergstrom?
I'll take this one. Bear with me, folks. It's a long one. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 271, State of Minnesota as follows. One, at a meeting held March 18, 2013, the board adopted a resolution stating its intention to issue its general obligation school building refunding bonds, Series 2013B, the bonds to refund certain maturities of the district's $15,980,000 general obligation school building refunding bonds. Series 2005A, bearing a date of original issue of April 6, 2005, the refunded bonds. Two, notwithstanding any contrary provision in said March 18, 2013 resolution, the clerk and executive director of finance and support services are authorized and directed to receive all proposals presented in conformity with this resolution and the terms of proposal contained in the official statement, the terms of which are ratified and confirmed in all respects, and to approve on behalf of the district the sale of the bonds to the party submitting the most favorable proposal, the purchaser, provided that the present value of the debt service on the refunding bonds under the proposal is lower by at least 8% than the present value of the debt service for the refunded bonds, each computed in accordance with Minnesota statutes, Section 475.67 subdivision 12 and 13. The future value of saving in debt service payments under that proposal is at least $1,100,000. And a favorable recommendation to accept the proposal is received from Ellers and Associates Incorporated. The clerk and the executive director of finance and support services are authorized and directed to endorse an acceptance on both copies of the most favorable proposal and to send one copy to the purchaser. Four, except as otherwise provided herein, the provisions of the March 18, 2013 resolution are ratified and confirmed.
Second.
Thank you, Director Bergstrom. Director Bush, moved and seconded. Any further explanation that we need on this?
As the resolution states, this is a refunding of bonds to see some savings with the current interest rates.
Yes.
And actually, this is the second refunding. These 2005 bonds were, I think they were part of the original bonds, were part of the '99 campaign. Those were refunded in 2005 and they are now eligible to be refunded again. So this is the second go-around on a refinance.
We continue to have an opportunity to reduce our effective interest rate by refunding again as we did earlier.
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board discussion? Again, an item that's been on a business agenda, as the resolution says and has been approved in concept. This is our final vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And it carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. And it's good to get ourselves in even better financial position with some of the actions we're taking tonight. Now for our next item. The School Board thanks those who have participated or contributed in any way to our review of security of district facilities and the safety of our students, employees, and visitors to our facilities. Student safety is always our highest priority. All our families and others who are invested in the quality of our schools can be confident that our teachers, principals, all school staff, administrators, and the school board members have established at every school security protocols to ensure the safety of everyone. Recent events have launched reexaminations, however, of what is being done and what more can be done to protect students at schools throughout our country. In Bloomington, too, the School Board has directed administration to undertake a review of building security and procedures in place to evaluate if necessary and to improve, where possible, student safety. Tonight, we are receiving the initial report that resulted from this advisory process. Safety and security is always a work in progress. It is another of our continuous improvement plans. So as new effective procedures become available in the future, they too may be incorporated into Bloomington's security policies. Bloomington Public Schools Executive Director of Community Relations and Emergency Management, Rick Kaufman, is recognized as a national expert, speaking to conferences and consulting with security officers in other districts throughout the country as well as others. He has led this year's safety and security review. The school district contracted with Paul McCullough, a former retired Bloomington police officer who acts as a consultant in his capacity with a number of different organizations, including other school districts, to guide the review and recommendation process in Bloomington. We have many others who are involved in and knowledgeable about the current review. And the board appreciates their concern and support and thanks them, especially those who took the time to be in attendance tonight for the report. Mr. Kaufman will introduce our guests as he presents the findings and recommendations of the Bloomington School Safety and Security Report tonight. Superintendent Fujitaki, did you have more you wanted to add?
I'll turn it over to Rick first, please.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Kaufman.
Chair Culver, thank you for the introduction and for those, for the words. Superintendent Fujitaki, I would like to introduce Paul McCullough as our security consultant. He is a certified emergency manager, longtime former member of the Bloomington Police Department. And I'm gonna have Paul share a little bit more about himself. And also, at the table this evening to assist us is Police Chief Jeff Potts, who we've been working with in days immediately following the tragedy in Newtown, Connecticut. And unfortunately, Fire Chief Uli Seal could not be with us tonight. Monday evenings are their drill nights. And so we could not get a representative from the Fire Department to be with us. Before we begin, however, I would like to ask Superintendent Fujitaki to make a few remarks as well.
Thank you. I'm gonna echo many of the things our chair shared with all of you. Welcome to all the presenters and to everyone in the audience. Thank you for being here to be part of this important topic. And thank you for everyone here who volunteered to be part of the safety and review teams. Appreciate that. I'd like to take this opportunity to express how fortunate we are to have a group of experts in this community. At the chair talk, we have Rick Kaufman. He's our in-house national expert on safety, school safety and security. We're also fortunate that we have cool terminus boundaries with the city. Therefore, we have just one fire chief and one police chief. Both are experts and both truly value students, staff, and family safety. And they've been a pleasure to work with. And we have our own retired police commander, Paul McCullough. He's our homegrown expert in school safety. So I want to thank everybody for the social capital of working as a team to produce what's gonna be presented tonight. Thank you very much, everyone. This is great work. And I'm gonna turn it back over to you, Rick, to proceed with your presentation.
Quick introduction. I'm a resident here in Bloomington. I have four kids go through the tremendous school here in Bloomington. I was fortunate enough to work at the Bloomington Police Department for quite a number of years. And in that time, I served as a resource officer, liaison officer at Kennedy High School. And that was very rewarding for me. And I also was able to spend some time in emergency preparedness and work through the State of Minnesota and get certified as an emergency manager. After I left Bloomington PD, I was able to do some work at Hopkins Schools. They took on a project of rewriting their entire crisis plan, working with their local police and fire, working on drills and exercising equipment and upgrades to their facilities to enhance their security and safety. So I appreciate the opportunity to work with Rick and work with our principal group and our school group. And I'm fortunate to be here tonight, excited tonight, to express some of the recommendations that we've identified.
Chief?
Sure. Thanks, Rick. I too am here, kind of to represent the Bloomington Police Department in our cooperative effort with the school district on this most recent school safety and security audit. But I will say that prior to any of those events in Newtown, we have worked closely with the school district for many months. And my, just about four and a half years as the police chief, I've had numerous meetings with Les and Rick to talk about various issues and really always trying to kind of improve that cooperation, look for ways to do things even a little bit better. And I will say, is kind of on the outset of this, that I believe that they've done a very good job with what they're going to present to you tonight. These recommendations, I think, are consistent with kind of front-edge stuff throughout the nation, at least from what I can tell in talking to police chiefs and police officials throughout the country. I am proud to say that we were a part of it. We had police staff involved from, I think, the very outset of this. All the audits in the schools, police personnel were with and were able to offer their advice and opinion. And I think what comes to you tonight is a very good product and cooperative effort with the police department and the school district.
So in a few minutes, what we're gonna do is share briefly with you the recommendations and a little bit about how we got here this evening. You all have received a copy of the presentation this evening, as well as the report, which only the board has received. Out of respect for our relationship with the school board, this information is to you first. This will be released, well, it's in the packets this evening publicly, but it will be posted and released publicly tomorrow on the district website. be posted and released publicly tomorrow on the district website in any requests as we've identified. The presentation this evening, the recommendations that you will see here in a few minutes, were presented to the principals a little over a week and a half ago, a week ago last Friday. It was our final go-to presentation to our principals, who have been working with us throughout this entire process and have actually done a, they've done a great job of helping us to identify and reach out to parents and staff members to be part of this process. And then, as we develop these reports and the recommendations, to bounce it off them to sort of final vetting. But beyond that, the public is not aware of what we're going to present here this evening. And with respect to that, we did ask our principals and we did post on the district social media sites an invitation to parents and staff members to be here tonight to learn of the findings, because throughout this process, as Paul acknowledged as well, we've been very transparent, and we have shared repeatedly with our parents and our staff members that throughout the process, we would keep them engaged and allow them a chance to review the work that we have done. And in fact, Paul, all of his draft reports went back to each school's team for a final review before came to Paul to make some changes and then came to me for final vetting and prepare for our presentation this evening. So without further ado, so our purpose this evening is to present to you the school safety and security report recommendations to better prepare, protect, and respond to future school We are not asking for school board action this evening, however, we have allotted time at the end if you have any questions or comments you'd wish to make. Final, we are going to present to you some preliminary cost estimates related to these recommended, to most of the recommendations. However, we are still in the process of developing those cost estimates, and it is our intent to work, continue to work with Rod and Gary at Ellers and Associates and Paul Aplikowski at World Architects, who has been instrumental in developing some of these preliminary costs based on the work that they have done around school safety and security. Those options will be presented on May thirteenth to the board, and it will be at that meeting that we will ask for the school board to take action on these proposed recommendations. I do believe that there are additional dates built in for the board if they have further questions or review before making a decision on these recommendations. It is important that I extend my acknowledgement and thanks to not only Bloomington Police Department, the leadership there, and also Bloomington Fire Department. Specifically, the names on the screen are those individuals that have been working with us throughout this process that started, literally, I believe January third or fourth was our meeting with Chief Potts and a number of his commanders. The process really started long before that, though. When we set our department goals, we, I met with Les last summer, and we talked about revising the district's crisis response and management plan. And that process was actually underway before the latest tragedies really pushed the speed with which we were embracing that and actually expanded that review process. And also, the members of the police department, and as Chief Potts indicated, both the police department and the fire department were with us from the beginning, and we had staff from both police and fire department with Paul on every one of the formal security audits at each of our schools. A tremendous amount of gratitude to our principals, our school leadership, our staff members and our parents who were part of these teams in phase one, and in some cases, the security audit in phase two. And I also want to acknowledge our school's social workers, psychologists, and guidance counselors, who met with me as part of one of those groups in phase one independently, and we had originally set aside ninety minutes, and I think we met for two hours. I did ask for Mr. Mavison, as well as Deirdre Yarborough, to review some of our findings as well, to give their insights and input on the report because of their extensive experience and knowledge in, not only their field, but also in crisis response and management. Mr. Mavison is a former member of the Bloomington Fire Department and has extensive experience in emergency management. So tremendous thank you for all of those folks. So in phase one, and we have more great detail in the report, so we're not going to spend a lot of time, but phase one was what I call taking a temperature of our community through staff and parents with a facility analysis that we wanted to determine the perceived level of the safety and security concerns our parents, our students at the secondary level specifically, and staff had. That was a ninety-minute conversation at every one of our sites, including transportation, community education, and Metro South adult basic education. We included the Educational Services Center and the previously mentioned school counselors, psychologists, and social workers. Paul.
My part was the second phase that dealt with meeting with the schools and doing a walkthrough, identifying physical features, alarm system, camera system, door locks, visitor control. And when I met with Rick, and my background is such that, I know that involving our police and fire partners right from the get-go is really the way you need to do it, because when you call nine-one-one, they're the ones that are going to come. So to get the local Bloomington police and fire perspective on these particular buildings, and in many cases, they have responded or they have met the principal, and they know a lot of information about the schools already. So the approach was to try to include police and fire and the school staff and identify what we want to do. We had meetings initially, and then we took upwards of an hour and a half to two hours going down every hallway, down every corridor, checking doors, talking about the overall safety and security and emergency response plans, and then identifying and looking at some recommendations. Once those were complete, they were shared back with our police and fire partners. Did I miss anything? What do we need to include? What do you guys think? In the addition to the principals. So we got feedback after the initial draft. Yes, what about this, add this, cleaned up the report and then forwarded on to Rick.
Right. Before we start with the recommendations, we're going to tag team this evening. We will present each recommendation and ask for Paul to provide insight, as well as the chief, in each of those recommendations, as obviously they've been aware of that. And also, I know there are some concerns about information that's being shared publicly. Let me assure you that anything that we share with you tonight is not of any secret nature and does not jeopardize nor put into any concerns, student or staff safety, with respect to the information we're going to share with you. So our first recommendation, to better prepare, protect, and respond to future emergencies, is to renovate all main entrances so a secondary set of secured doors is in place, and all traffic is funneled into the main office before gaining access into the school. If you've been to Olson Middle School and know, and you'll see that once school is in session, all doors are locked, you enter into the vestibule, and the only way you can gain access to the school is to first go into the office. It is that model that we're recommending in this first recommendation, which would also include the pond, Center of Southwood, and the ESC here at Oak Grove, in addition to each of our schools. We do not own the General Dynamics Building, so this is not something that would be done as part of community education or Metro South.
The entrances are, you know, it's always a balance, security and convenience. And the principals really hit it on the head because of my conversations with them, they said, you know, this is a great school, we have great parents and great kids, and we want that family welcoming environment. But in today's world, they realize that there has to be a layer, a reasonable layer of security, and the days of walking into a school and being directly into the school, into the classrooms without some kind of a screening or assessment are over. So this recommendation is really directing that all visitors come to the office, get checked in, get verified. The other part is schools do a really good job now that if a parent's coming to pick up a student to go to the dentist's office, they don't walk down to the classroom and meet the teacher and get their son or daughter. They come to the office, the son and daughter are called down to the office. So the attitude of the principals in the buildings kind of facilitate this overall entrance visitor process that would make it more secure.
While this was a significant change, we know from Tom Lee and his team at Olson Middle School, it is, it has worked very well. It is a bit of an inconvenience for parents and for staff, but unfortunately and sadly, we live in a time that this kind of recommendation is necessary to address concerns of not so much what some want to focus on in terms of an active shooter, but people that are in the building that shouldn't be in the building or making attempts to go into the building that really shouldn't be into the building. Our second recommendation is to, as you know, all of our schools have multiple entry exits, multiple doors that we have, that one can gain access to. All of our schools do a great job of making sure those doors are locked, but in some cases, we'd need designated, limited designated entry points for, in some cases, staff or access to not only playgrounds, but our athletic fields. And what we are recommending is that we continue to keep all those doors locked, but some of those designated points of entry, we would equip them with an electronic access control system, okay? Those electronic access systems would be integrated into the school's alarm system in the event that a door is, there's an attempt to pry open that door, or a door is left ajar for a brief period of time. We know that sometimes students, sometimes staff, will open a door, put a rock or something to keep that door open. Integrated it into the school's alarm system, after a brief period of time, would indicate to our custodians, a door is ajar, and they would then go and check and remove that rock so it's not left open and unsecured for a longer period of time.
Just a couple of things. I think card access is a really useful way to manage some of those doors during the school day. Again, during school in session, the only door that opens is the front door, and we're talking about having every visitor come in through, physically come in through the office. There are recess periods, there are FIAID classes, there are other doors that get used during the day, and a key fob or a key card system would give convenience for that staff member to gain access in and out, but then provide security so they're not propping the doors.
All of our schools, in most cases, they do ask for staff to wear their identification badge. We typically see after national tragedies or even tragedies within the state where the use of the identification badges is pretty regular. But over a period of time, weeks and months, the, it is, it kind of falls by the wayside. Some access systems would be, and could be tied to your identification badge, so that access into the building, you would need to have your identification badge. A lot of our staff, by the way, do come through the main entrance of a school. There are larger schools with parking lots for staff that are in different locations, and having a designated entry point is something that would be beneficial in that way. Our third recommendation is to initiate a review of our current electronic and manual visitor sign-in processes and to adopt a universal approach to a visitor management system. We heard over and over from our parents and our staff and our building leaders that whatever we do at our schools, to be consistent and to be universal. We do have a number of elementary schools that have funded their, through their own funds, systems of, electronic visitor sign-in systems. They're not tied specifically to any databases that are current visitor management systems that are best practices on the market, that can be tapped into sex offender lists, into non-custodial parent lists. And so while, again, we don't have a specific recommendation, there are a number of product software that are out there, we do believe, though, that going to a more universal visitor management system is appropriate since we're directing people to come into the office to sign in, get a specific visitor badge if they have a reason to be in the building, beyond what Paul had mentioned, where some of our schools have asked parents that are coming to pick up their child to stay in the office, and the child will be brought down to the office, or if they're there to drop something off to their child, leave it at the office, and we'll make sure it's given to the child.
The only thing I'll add to that is, and I saw it in the schools right now, is a very good attitude on staff to appropriately challenge people in the building if they don't have their ID or their visitor badge. I went into a couple of different buildings and was immediately challenged in a very positive way and say, hey, could I help you? Are you looking for someone? And I think this whole part of visitor IDs and identification is one part of it, but the staff that's oriented to say, when they see someone without it, to say, hey, excuse me, can I help you? Can I show you where the office is? Is the other part of it that is very important.
Our best approach to stopping an intruder is to develop barriers. So some of the recommendations you, we've identified tonight are creating barriers to an intruder getting into places of the building beyond the office. Barriers such as locking all doors and forcing them into a one primary entry area, in some cases, those other designated entry pieces. In the number four, we are recommending that we equip all of our classrooms with doors that can be locked from the inside by the classroom or substitute teacher. In essence, every classroom would be locked throughout the day, and that the newer security functions of those lock sets, those door lock sets, would allow the door to be what we call locked and propped. It can be left propped open by teachers for ventilation or kids coming and going, but in the event the school is in lockdown or in, needs to go into emergency secure mode, these doors can very quickly be pulled shut and they're locked. Instead of putting teachers to, in harm's way to go outside and lock that door, or the precious seconds of getting that door locked and moving into lockdown, there are a lot, again, different systems, but the upgrade would recommend that all of our classrooms be locked, and then it's the discretion of the teacher whether they have that door open during the class day.
Not much to add to that. It's very important, you could imagine the stress that a teacher would have if they have to go out into the hallway, manipulate a key into a lock to lock their doors. So all we're saying is pre-lock those doors, ideally close those doors. If you are dealing with elementary kids coming and going to the nurse, to the office, to counseling, operationally, it's very difficult for elementary schools to have the doors locked and closed all the time, because every two seconds, they have a second grader, third grader coming back. So there's a reasonable compromise, and that's the door's locked and it's propped open. So in an emergency situation, it's a matter of pulling it closed.
Recommendation number five, we have a number of security cameras in most of our buildings. There are a number of buildings that do not have security cameras. As we've done an assessment, we would recommend that we install a limited number of security cameras in all of our schools. But I want to underscore here that the effectiveness of surveillance technology, like the use of security cameras to improve school safety, is limited. Security cameras should only be used to complement a comprehensive approach to school safety. It is one that focuses on awareness, intervention, and prevention, as opposed to only deterrence and detection. A security camera will not stop an intruder or someone that is intent on harm inside the school. It serves as a deterrence and a detection. So along with this recommendation, and part of another recommendation you'll see here in a moment about training, is reinforcing the importance of staff presence in our hallways and other high-student traffic areas during all passing periods and before and after school. We sometimes have believed the false sense of security that security cameras provide our schools. That's why we don't believe blanketing all of our schools, every hallway, every stairwell, every public area of that school with a security camera is a wise investment. However, a managed number of security cameras will help our principals and others charged with investigating incidents within the school, and in some cases, helping law enforcement for issues such as vandalism and persons on property, attempts to break in, or maybe even an issue in the neighborhood that is picked up by security camera, external security cameras. Though detection and deterrence, that's the best use of those security cameras. Paul, again, the chief is, can add weight to that as well.
The only thing I'll say, and Rick's already said it, and you already realize it, there's not the silver bullet, you do this, your schools are absolutely safe. It's all part that can enhance the overall security. Cameras are good, and the other part is the implementation of where the cameras are and how they're distributed in the school would be, we've obviously integrate the principal and that staff in where they have a need to have a camera also.
Recommendation six is to install a duress button in school offices for use in an emergency. Again, what we heard from staff is the opportunity or ability to more quickly put the school into a safe emergency condition, such as a school lockdown. Through the activation of a duress button by a staff member in the office, what we would recommend is activate emergency strobe lights in critical areas. What we mean by this is areas that have high student use, such as gymnasiums or caf- What we mean by this is areas that have high student use, such as gymnasiums or cafeterias, where the noise level is fairly high, the activity is very robust, and sometimes our PA systems may not cut through that noise. And so the strobe lights tied to a duress button, that would also release magnetized fire doors. Paul can talk specifically about this through his, through the security audit. As we looked at fire doors, again, creating barriers to intruders or individuals that are, that get into the school, a duress button would allow us to demagnetize those fire doors, creating a barrier. In all cases, though, and we underscore this with principals, and we will underscore this in our training of staff, that in the event of a use of a duress or panic button, staff must call 911 first to report an emergency or crisis, or within seconds after pressing that duress button. The duress button will not be integrated to the police department. This is for schools to get into a safe emergency condition, and I'll let Paul and Chief speak to that specifically.
Now, there's really three things, no matter what it is, the three things that the principal or the leadership at the school have to do right away. They have to put the school in a safe condition, pull the fire alarm, hit the panic button and do a PA announcement, or do the severe weather announcement. They got to get the school in a safe condition. The other thing is, the situation is such that we need our public safety partners there to handle a situation. So we got to put the school in a safe condition, and we got to call 911 right away. And the third thing is assume command. The radio systems that the schools have work very well, and the principals are integrating a system where they assume command, they make an announcement, and they do a proper notification of the crisis team members of the situation. So that's really what the stress is. And in threatening situation, time and barriers are something that we have to plug in for our advantage, because when the police come here, and they will come here very fast and very quick. We're fortunate, Bloomington is structured and has a police department in which an average response time might be two or three minutes, or less, depending on where the school is. So excellent response time, but the response time requires them to get that call. And that goes back to what Rick was just saying, is integrating a 911 call right out of the, right out of the chute is really critical.
And, you know, there's a theme to some of the recommendations here. Rick mentioned time, Paul mentioned how important getting the 911 call is. Our approach at the police department, and a lot of this isn't really talked about publicly, but I will tell you that we train our officers to run, to drive, to do whatever they can to get there as fast as they can and run to the gunfire. Run to wherever the threat is. Get there as quick as they can. And so when we're talking about duress systems or panic buttons, entryway doors, locking mechanisms on interior doors, what that really does is, is the duress buttons will activate that 911 response even sooner, or at least it'll activate the lockdown procedures inside the school even sooner, which hopefully protects people. The doors, quite simply, are there to protect the students, the staff. The entryways are really there to help slow people down, slow down the entrance of perpetrator. Every second counts, as we probably have, if you've probably noticed on the incidents that get talked about nationally, two or three, Paul talked about a two-minute response time, a three-minute response time, which is fast, but we're talking seconds in these cases. And the recommendations that are being brought forward tonight help shave seconds off, precious, precious seconds off of that response. And the, at the end of the day, in all of these incidents, we know that they're over fairly quickly. And we've done a lot of research and work on looking at them, and I think that our response plan, not only the lockdown procedures inside the school that have been developed and trained out, and are trained on an ongoing basis with the students and staff, but also our police response plan is tip of the spear type stuff. And we want to constantly keep on kind of looking for better ways to do it, faster ways to do it, safer ways to do it. And I think that these recommendations that are being talked about tonight help in that effort as much as we can right now.
Our next recommendation, in addition to the physical structure changes, the security cameras, the locking doors, and the recommendations that have been previously mentioned, comes the need to initiate a training program for all staff to respond to emergency situations that is in accordance with the incident command system. The incident command system has been used for many years by our first responders, law enforcement, fire, and other emergency management. Incident command systems have been, I would say, over the last couple of years, five, six, seven years or so, school districts have embraced, and in fact, incident command system model that is used by law enforcement in emergency response, has been adjusted specifically for schools. Along with this recommendation, because training is vital to the success of any crisis intervention, prevention, mitigation, and response, as well as the recovery, is we will establish what we call building emergency response teams. Some call them crisis response teams. Most of our schools have them in some way, shape, or form, but these teams will specifically receive advanced training in crisis prevention, intervention, and response strategies. Our school crisis plans will be reviewed and revised to ensure that they are compliant with the National Incident Management System, otherwise referred to as NIMS. Annually, the state requires all of our schools to do what we call a 5-5-1 drills. These are five fire drills or evacuation, fire or evacuation drills, five lockdown drills, and one severe weather drill. We, as part of these 5-5-1 drills that are done each year, we will require a minimum of one unannounced evacuation and/or lockdown drill, because one of the things that we have found is that when you come, when it comes to evacuation and lockdown, we can sometimes have a tendency to become very rote in our response. It is a disruption when you have an evacuation drill and a lockdown drill. It's very easy to do these when they're announced, and at the most opportune time in a school that creates the least disruption to the school. However, we do know that incidents that have happened, they don't come at the most opportune time. They often come at the most inopportune time, before, or as school students are arriving, during lunch hour, during passing period, or when schools are releasing for the day. So these unannounced evacuation and lockdown drills are necessary to help prepare our staff to be able to respond. All the training is to help develop a culture of understanding and a response, initial one, two, or three steps, you as a staff member, either as a teacher or other staff role within the school, what you will do. I'm going to let Paul talk about the enhanced drill piece to this, because he has a lot of experience in working with Hopkins Schools and this, and we are also recommending that we, any of these 5-5-1 drills is an enhanced drill that involves our public safety partners, fire, and police.
I want to talk, I want to talk about enhanced drills, but I want to talk about ICS and how important it is. When I was first doing my work at Hopkins Schools, and I'm not picking on any particular principal or that school district, because I think it was kind of common, but when we were discussing, you know, what they do if they have a particular crisis situation happening at the school, some of the principals would say, "Well, I'd get on the phone right away and I'd call Les." Wrong answer. If it's life safety, they don't call Les, they call Jeff. The point is that ICS is a system that teaches that that principal or that representative, the principal's not there, because you have to have backups for that. That person's in charge of life safety. And what they need to do is assume command, and what that is, is get the school in a safe condition, call the lockdown, pull the fire alarm, and call 911, and get on that radio. Do those three things, and if you get these guys coming, you're on your own, but you're on your own for two or three minutes. ICS talks about unified command. So when the police and fire show up, that principal, instead of going to the lunchroom and being hands-on, that principal is the command person that is here to brief that first squad or that first fire truck. This is what we have, this is what we're doing, this is what has happened. And then they, the police and fire take over that life safety and advise the school what they need to do next. So the importance of ICS, in my opinion, is really, really high and something that the district could look at improving. The enhanced drills is, drills are a pain in the butt. They interrupt the school day, they interrupt learning, absolutely. But I think that my impression, not impression, my opinion of the schools right now is, our principals take them very seriously right now. And the enhanced drill is just taking a drill and adding a little more realism. For example, you know, if you do a drill at a, for a fire, and everyone's in their classroom, and you're in the, in the office and say, "Okay, pull the fire alarm." Well, that's not how it works. What will happen is you'll get a call from the kitchen staff saying, "Hey, we have a fire in the kitchen." So what we'll do in enhanced drills is, we'll have a script, we'll have a scenario in which a teacher may call the office and say, "Drill, drill, I have a fire in my bathroom," or whatever. And then, then the office staff have to respond, pull the fire alarm, call 911, and evacuate the building, and have the crisis team members sweep the building, make sure everyone's out, and report that to the command person who will brief that fire truck, saying, "Hey, we have a fire in the kitchen, we have this going on, we've evacuated all except this part of the building." A good briefing so that the integration of these life safety services can occur. Another enhanced option would be, once you're outside, if there is a real situation in the building, you may not be able to go back in. And pretty much, they go out, they come back in, they go out, they come back in. Well, enhanced drill is, "Hey, St. Edward's Church is our relocation site for Ridgeview. Well, have you ever drilled going over there? Well, let's give that a try." Yes, it's going to take five, 10, 15 minutes, but we've drilled it. If we ever have to do it, we'll be able to do it. So that's the idea of enhanced drills.
Training is really critical in addition, because as Jeff shared with our principals, our training needs to align with what law enforcement will do. Our staff needs to understand when law enforcement shows up, what they're going to do. So as we get into training, we will be working with our public safety partners. On that training, there are some specific national programs. Paul has a tremendous amount of experience in training and working with our, as I said, public safety partners on the training piece.
I do want to just follow up a little bit on that. When you do an enhanced drill, it's real important to invite police and fire to come and observe, because they'll see stuff. They'll see stuff that they may comment on to improve. And the other thing is, they'll see what the school is doing. They'll sense and they'll understand, when they arrive, what the school's going to look like, how the school is structured, and what that principal's name is, and where the media center is, and where the gymnasium is, and all those kinds of things that help prepare response.
While the bus and parent-student drop-off and pickup lanes and parking lots were not a specific identification of the work that we were doing, Paul's formal security audit did look both at internal and external sites, at each of the sites. What we did find, what Paul did and the teams did find, is that there are a couple of our schools that we need to improve and monitor the traffic control measures that are currently in place to reduce the potential for pedestrian vehicle accidents. Not all of our sites, but some of them, and Paul can give a specific example of what one of those may look like.
You know, I think traffic safety is very important. We're very fortunate that most of our buildings have a good separation of buses and parent drop-off, have a good system, they have school patrol out there. It really works pretty well, but there can be some improvements. And I think, once we get on the public streets and roadways, we can incorporate discussions with our police partners on traffic safety things. The one example I'll give you is right at Oak Grove Elementary School. They have a one-lane parent drop-off that opens up into three lanes. They have, pardon me? I'm sorry, Valley View Elementary. They have three lanes, and they have the fire lane identified as the lane closest to the building, and that always has to remain clear, so that parents drop off their students in the center lane or the far-left lane, and then the students have to cross three lanes of traffic to get into the school. When we talked about this and having our police and fire partners there, they're looking at it, and we say, "Why don't we move the fire lane over to the far-left side? We can, as long as we have access for our fire trucks, we're okay." So I mean, just a little recommendation like that, trying to remove a moving lane of traffic away from where you drop off your students.
We heard both in Phase 1 and Phase 2, ongoing concerns with high-traffic areas that we've had some issues with and we continue to work with, the city on Portland Avenue by Valley View Middle School, the Frontage Road and the exit ramp off 35W here, onto 106th Street, 102nd in front of Jefferson and Olson Elementary and Middle School, continue to be problem areas for us. And we identified them as part of the report, because it is important that we continue to work with the city and address those concerns for student safety. Their students are crossing those very busy streets, and so that's why we've added it to the report and have identified some of those pieces in part of recommendations. A lot of that is outside of our control, but it's important to identify that in the report to bring emphasis to that. Okay? Our last two recommendations. We, one of the problems we have in all of our schools, and this is not unique to Bloomington, nor is it unique to all of our school districts in the state of Minnesota, but across the country, and that is the after-school program safety and security and the unsupervised students in buildings during off-school hours. Our schools, like schools across the country, are used sometimes till 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night. Our school day, while it may end at 2:30 or 3 o'clock, or 3:30 in some cases, really does extend to 6:30 because of after-school programs, remedial programs, targeted services, as well as kid safari. We ran out of runway, quite frankly, to give adequate time to address the specific strategies we need to implement on after-school program safety and security. So what we are recommending, and by the way, we, we're recommending establishing a task force to develop specific strategies to address after-school program safety and security. We have begun some conversations with Tom Holton, Community Services, which has a lot of those kid safari and targeted service programs, as well as Assistant Superintendent Chris Lennox on the academic side of this, and we'll be developing recommendations for a task force. Tom Holton has developed a survey for us to at least start to identify some of those other issues. All of our youth family coordinators that work with our after-school programs identified this hall, both in yours and in Phase 1 process, as a considerable concern, as well as our parents. So we don't have specific strategies this evening, but we believe a task force to develop those and bring those recommendations back is something that we will, we recommend moving forth expeditiously. In addition to that, we have heard the, particularly, all of the school shootings that I have been, that I've worked with or have consulted on, and some of those that I haven't, there often seems to be a thread with respect to mental health, identification, intervention in some cases. It's what led to threat assessment teams back in the mid-'90s. I worked with Dr. Mohanty out of the Los Angeles Unified School District on some of his cutting-edge work around threat assessment teams that helped to identify students that previously fit a profile to an active shooter or violent offender, but we all know that you cannot accurately predict a violent offender. However, what we discovered in our conversation with our school psychologists, guidance counselors, and social workers, a need to review our current mental health staffing, identification, and intervention needs. So we are recommending the establishment of a task force that will look at the current staffing, identification, intervention needs in the district, then provide recommendations to ensure the district has a comprehensive multidisciplinary program, but addresses the ongoing and emerging student mental health needs. Again, in this area, we've had some preliminary conversation with staff and also Eric Melby through Student Services in establishing and leading a task force that we believe that, we join many school districts, again, across the country that is looking, spending more time reviewing mental health issues that our kids have. Those are our recommendations. Now to share with you our preliminary cost projections of each of those recommendations by number. Again, I want to underscore, these are preliminary cost projections. These numbers are likely to change as we continue to vet this, vet this work, but we wanted to give you a ballpark sense of those numbers. So our first recommendations around access control systems, which we talked about the entry vestibule changes, visitor sign-in management, designated entry points, the keyless entry systems, and classroom lock upgrade, classroom lock upgrades. You see the costs up there, it's in millions. So entry vestibules, we could not do all of the entry vestibule changes, all of our schools and sites in one year. Just can't be done. So we broke it down, the Phase 1 would be, if we find funding and once approved, Phase 1 would tackle our elementary schools first at $2.2 million as a projected cost. Second phase would be our secondary schools the following year. Second phase would be our secondary schools the following year, including ESC at $1.3 million. Visitor management systems at $200,000, designated entry systems at a half a million, and classroom lock upgrades, which would be every classroom door, about $600,000. Alarm systems, which would be the manual alarm activation button, as well as color-coded strobes, is just under $1 million projection. The security camera system, which would be additional cameras and a new server to complement the other servers, as these are web-based, the servers that allow us to integrate the cameras in the, for our principals and others that are looking at those detection through the cameras of deterrence, is about $200,000. After-school security measures, very hard to project this, because we don't know what those are, but running from best-case scenarios or, or some security, safety measures we talked about, staffing, radios, coverage of, of those entrances, after the official school day is done at 2:30 or 3 o'clock, extending to 6:30 when most of those programs wrap up, is about a half a million dollars. As with any construction project or a project of this nature, there is a contingency. Could be labor, construction, other miscellaneous, this is just a ballpark figure of $400,000. Total projected budget is $6.8 million, okay? Again, I don't have many specifics beyond these projected cost numbers that were pulled together by Paul Apikowski and our other partners, but it gives you something to work from as you begin your internal deliberation or review coming into May 13. That's our report. We will gladly take any questions or comments you may have.
I want to thank everybody involved in this report. Thank you for bringing it forward for us today for our initial consideration of what you've been working on. Seems very comprehensive. I want to thank Paul McCullough for spending some time over the weekend in walking me through it and giving me some further insights as well, and thanks to others who I've had a chance to consult with as well before this meeting. Is there a board comment? Arlene?
Can you see why I'm always saying I'm thankful to be on the Bloomington School Board, where we're in one district in the city and also the Chamber of Commerce? If we had to be working with another police department in so many school districts, are in more than one city, so just have to bring that up. That's why I've been involved in the Chamber all these years.
Right. Director Hibbs?
Yes, first, let me say thank you for coming tonight. Paul, Rick, Chief, I have to say, I'm glad that we can rely on your expertise and you're not asking me to figure out what we need to do to increase security and safety. I have just one question, and Rick, you had mentioned establishing task forces. Any idea when we might get them going?
Um, sooner than later. I don't, I can't give you a specific timeline, but we have had some, as I said, preliminary conversations with Tom Holton and as well as Eric Melby on developing those task forces. As I also mentioned, Joe Mavison and Deirdre Yarborough, who we really have relied on from a district crisis response team to help us in incidents we've dealt with on the mental health side, as well as assisting us in the crisis response, have looked at this recommendation, supported in addition to the training, and they're very eager, I can tell you, to get those task force work started as well.
Great, great, thank you. I'm also, it was interesting to hear that the, I don't know if it was the Fire Department or if it was the city or we worked together, but they were willing to change the, the fire lane from the number-one lane to the number-three. I like hearing that kind of stuff. Thanks.
Well, not hearing any other questions or discussion? Yes?
Well, Mr. Chair, I have a number of questions, but they're very specific, and I guess I'm a little bit concerned about having that discussion in this forum.
We'd be happy to take the questions, and if we believe that they would compromise the safety of our schools or district, then we would so duly know.
Well, would your idea be that you'd like to have a different forum? Director Hibbs?
Well, I, I, I think they're important questions, and, you know, my guess is you've got answers for most of them, but, you know, I'd like to know that, and so, you know, I don't know how you'd like to proceed with that.
Yes.
Well, okay. First question is just, where do you draw the line on plausible scenarios that you considered?
Uh, I guess you look at the history. You look at what has happened nationwide and what's most likely to happen. Risk assessment. What are the most likely threats to these schools? What are the, and they're all, all the responses, all the safety responses are all hazards. I mean, you only really do two things, you either leave or you stay. And if you stay, how do you stay? Or how do you stay? Do you lock down? Do you move the shelter in place? If you leave, do you evacuate, do you go to your relocation site? So the response of the schools are really only two things. Do we stay, and how do we safely stay? If we leave, how do we leave and where do we go? And they always integrate a 911 call. Within two minutes, our public safety partners get there, and then we start discussing, you know, they, they take command and identify with us what our strategy should be. I, I don't know if I'm, you know, I, I think you, you use realistic scenarios.
You plan for the worst and hope for the best. In all of our trainings, whether it's tabletop trainings or live drills, although we, human subjects review boards at universities do not recommend live drills, that's for law enforcement to do, that's for fire to do, not for schools and personnel. But in all of our training, in particular on tabletop scenarios, as you plan for the worst, but you plan for multiple scenarios. What we know is, is that under the incident command system, there are specific response mechanisms. When you are in a crisis situation in a school, your mind, there's overload with your own self-protection, as well as the protection of students and, and others in the building. Trying to flood that mind with a laundry list of what you would do to respond is not good training. It is, what are the one, two, three steps you need to do, as Paul said, either to lock down, shelter in place, or evacuate? There is some, within the crisis response community debate around whether you should at all times evacuate the building and not stay in the building in a lockdown. These are the kinds of debates, these are the kinds of scenarios that we in crisis response, emergency management are constantly dealing with and constantly training, because you cannot plan for every likely scenario that a school district will have. In fact, as I counsel school districts, they spend more time trying to detail every potential crisis that, that could befall a school district, and less on that specific training of the response that you will, that you need to do. So the plausible incidents that could happen in a school can run all the way from active shooters to, we deal with different types of crises, sometimes on a weekly basis, sometimes over a course of a couple weeks, with student incidents and, student incidents and staff incidents. But we're prepared for any one of those kinds of scenarios.
So the, the suggestions that you laid out, how does that address an assisted breach of the doors? In other words, you know, there's an accomplice already inside the building, and they open a door for someone.
Not every school safety, security measure, recommendation that we have presented tonight, nor that is out there, will stop an intruder or someone that is hell-bent on creating as much mayhem, mayhem death and, and confusion. We know that the Sandy Hook Elementary School had the best practices with respect to crisis or security, safety and security in place. Adam Lanza shot his way through that school. He encountered staff that someone had the wherewithal to turn the P.A. system on, and while it was horrific to hear the confrontation and the murder of two individuals in the office, led staff to go into immediate school lockdown. That coupled with law enforcement's immediate response to the school, while there were 26 tragic deaths, did deter more students and staff likely, likely victims in that particular incident.
These, these, this discussion tonight isn't about preventing necessarily, as Rick said, 100 percent. It's about, what do you do when it happens? And we can practice scenario after scenario after scenario, and one thing's pretty much for sure, is that when it really happens, it's going to be another scenario. And so what Paul mentioned is an all-hazard plan, both regarding the lockdown procedures as well as the police response, and it, you know, there are going to be elements of every scenario that are similar. And we try to perfect our plan, we try and perfect our response, so that we can deal with whatever the variables that are going to happen once we get there. These recommendations, I think, are, are wise and prudent things to help us with that. They're, as I mentioned before, really there to try and slow things down just a little bit, save us a few seconds, maybe a minute, in which hopefully gives us time for our plan to actually work and stop the threat as quickly as you can. We don't know what that, you know, how long that's going to be, but, you know, the, the real goal here is for us in this, in the school district to, to keep continuing to perfect that plan, that response. This, these things here kind of help us with that plan, and we've already had some preliminary discussions about how we might go through a review process of our response plans here late this summer, before school starts next year, with maybe some modifications to those that really represent even a better plan, a better response to that. But they don't prevent necessarily every scenario from happening. They're just there to try and assure us as much success as possible once we get there.
So do any of these potentially though, slow down emergency responders? Because you talked about the magnetized fire doors. Some of the buildings are really big, so I'm assuming emergency responders won't always be going through the front door. They may need to access the building through another door, because that's the closest way to get to whatever the issue is.
And I won't get into the tactics too much on that, Director Hibbs, but I will say that the, the benefit that we have in, in this district is that the Bloomington Police Department is going to be the ones responding, and we'll have the benefit of knowing what security measures you have in place. In one way or another, we'll make entry.
There are Knox boxes, there's key access for public safety at all the buildings that allow the police response to have access to master keys. There are secured not-lock boxes at each building for that particular part. The other, the other thing I want to mention is confidence building. When you are training, whether it's police or fire or school personnel in a crisis situation, you need to build confidence. So you never would develop a scenario that there's a no-win. In other words, you want that principle, you want realistic training that builds confidence, that builds success, so that they can integrate quickly with our police and fire partners. You, you challenge and make it realistic, but you don't overwhelm and, and develop scenarios that are doomed to have them fail in, in the training process.
With, with the magnetized fire doors, is there a possibility of a scenario where that would actually trap students from exiting the building?
No, the, the fire doors, because they're fire doors, have to allow one side, two ways out. So if a fire door closes in a hallway, there's a doorway down at the end, that's a fire door exit, some classrooms may have an exterior door, and the fire door on the other side of the hallway has panic bars that they can exit. They can always exit, because the fire service requires them for fire doors. It just puts a barrier there to slow down the threat and allow our public safety partners to get there on that threat scenario.
Fire inspectors, the assistant fire chief was on many of the security audits, walking through. Again, all of these recommendations were reviewed by Fire Department, as well as Chief Potts and others, so that any concerns would have been raised by them and would not have obviously been in the recommendation.
So you're saying there's never a scenario where somebody would be trying to go a particular direction, they would encounter the non-panic bar side of the fire door?
If they do, there is another, there is another egress at some point. That's why we drill with students and staff on the, to egress out.
But I'm saying the threat might be that direction, so now they're going. Does that make sense?
What, um, well, I think we understand the question, the issue, is I think that they've, they've walked through it with the Fire Department, with our public safety folks, and have tried not to create a funnel towards a, a dead end essentially. And, you know, the, 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 the fire doors have to allow access out.
One way may, may be secured, but with the master key in an Knox box and, and the building administration working with the police service, they, the police side can get the master key to get access into those areas.
Okay. And then, just the last thing is, you know, you talked about the, the lock and prop doors on the interior hallways, but I've noticed in some of our buildings where maybe the ventilation isn't so great, and this is a great one, that typically the music rooms, a lot of times, this, you get to this time of year or later, they're propping those doors open.
Yeah. And that's, that's a, a staff education and threat assessment, and you can't do it. I mean, I, I totally get it, but it jeopardizes the safety of the building to prop open the door.
Thank you.
Yes, Director Ablin?
Thank you. First of all, I think your report is excellent. Okay, very good. I just have one concern. I don't see any, any area that you speak to the 15, 20 minutes of the opening day of school, when you're trying to get 14, 1500 students in at one time. Where's the security there?
Well, all of our schools, well, we found, particularly at the elementary school, but certainly middle school too, but more so at the elementary school, we have staff that are outside. Again, what Chief Potts has said and, and what Paul has said, we can't control every possible scenario or every likelihood to ensure the safety of kids. From experience, I can tell you, the saddest thing I ever had to do is to tell a parent that schools can no longer give 100% assurance that their child will be safe, as they're coming to school, as they're entering school, or in school during the day and at dismissal. What our recommendation, I believe number seven on that task force after school, does address the need to look at before school, after school, those times when students may, may be unsupervised. So again, it's, I don't know if I'm answering your question, Director Ablin, specifically, but we don't scenario every possibility that could occur, either before school or after school. It's providing what measures we have in place. Students still need to come into school, and you know, you've been at school in the morning when the kids are getting dropped off and parents are dropping them off, and sometimes parents are coming in the office, it is a bit chaotic. And staff is there to assist students in many cases in many respects, and at the secondary level, many cases, staff are inside the building, students are entering.
You know, I think having staff available to monitor arrival and dismissal, and you can do a little drilling side on, for example, on the afternoon side, what if you have the severe weathers go, go, the severe weather sirens go out right at dismissal? What's the strategy? How are you going to do that? And you could look at a possible opportunity to drill some, that particular part.
Right. We've done drills with school districts where, at that time, you have an incident outside the school that puts children and staff and parents in harm's way. The idea is obviously get them all into the school, get into a lockdown mode as soon as possible. So it's grabbing kids, it's running, it's getting in the school and getting into safe locations, getting those doors locked in as quickly a fashion as possible, while someone's calling 911 and law enforcement is coming. We've had some instances even in Bloomington where law enforcement is dealing with, totally unrelated to schools, an incident close to the school where they have advised us, go into lockdown just for the safety of students, but more so so that we don't, we're not flooding the streets or that area with kids coming and going. We had one last year, I think, we dealt with, and it was several hours, and Chief Potts did some magic to have that end just before school dismissal, so we, so we didn't have to put kids in, in flooding that area, so.
Has Superintendent Fujitaki?
Consulted, does reference international borders, Paul Apikowski. Paul is a partner with the Wold Architect Firm. Wold is doing a number of safety, security reviews of the facilities for other districts such as Stillwater, is another valued member of the team.
Yeah, I just, just really quickly, just want to say thank you for the report and thank you for all your help. I have, I would have a couple comments, just because I'm constantly going in and out of buildings, I've been doing that for several years, so I would have a couple questions, comments, but I just don't feel comfortable saying that right now, because it's, it's... but I just don't feel comfortable saying that right now because it's, it's, the meeting is open. But maybe it's some specifics that I can later on ask you. I do want to say that I am really thankful to seeing the report that traffic control is being addressed because it has always been a concern for me in terms of seeing the kids so many times, you know, trying to cross streets and sometimes no stop signs in place. And you talked about looking at those areas where there's a lot of traffic, like a specific street. But also, you know, there are some streets that we sometimes probably do not notice very much because they're so, you don't see cars coming and going too often. But those are streets that are really close to the schools where there's, you know, the four corners and there's not a single stop sign. So those, you know, I've noticed that in, in close to several schools. It's always a concern, especially during the winter time when there's so much ice and, you know, the snow. It just makes it a little more complicated for the kids to be out there walking. So I think that, that's really something important that I really appreciate your addressing.
And let me address that if it comes to a city street, or in some cases, it's a county or even the state highway, school district has no control over that, whether there's a stop sign or even if there's a crosswalk. When we're, those are identified, though, we do and have worked with the city or particularly this, this frontage road and 35W exit, that's the State Department, Highway Department, MINDOT. And we continue to work with them. We also, when parents and others have brought those safety concerns to us, we have to fortunately or unfortunately steer them to city council, city council representative because we absolutely have no control over that. And it is citizens that have banded together with those concerns and addressed that through the state or the city representative council member, that those are addressed. And Chief Potts may have more information on that. But I, I just don't want folks to, in the public that's watching this or all in the audience, to know that we have a lot of control over roads that are outside of, of our responsibility, one and or is not even our property.
Right.
The, the one thing I'm going to mention is bus safety. We had an opportunity to do a safety, security audit of the bus transportation. And they were very much focused on bus safety and that their bus drivers are safe. And I know the police department, and Jeff can comment on this, especially at the start of the, well, any like stop arm violation. If there's a particular roadway where the bus comes and puts out the stop sign and there's violations, I know, I, it's a significant violation and the police department is more than happy to enforce that particular violation.
Yeah.
And I'd be more than willing to, or more than happy to have conversation with you offline about specific locations that you're concerned. You know, as was mentioned already, some of those are a little bit complicated in that they, they may not be city streets. They may be county, county streets. And so we do have to work with our county partners. And sometimes those, those projects take a little bit longer. But I would be happy to talk with you about specific locations and, and discuss maybe some, some ways that we can approach the issue. Sometimes, as was mentioned, it's a city council issue and sometimes there's some other ways. And so I'm, I'm pretty easy to get ahold of, but if you want, I can stick around afterwards and exchange contact information on that.
Definitely.
Let me also add, Director Corman, that all of our principals, even though they identified the drop off and pickup sites is, is, it generally works very well. There are still concerns because we have parents that don't necessarily follow some of the rules and the signs that are put there, staff that are there. And so we know that principals are constantly reminding parents to follow those pickup and drop off rules and really adhere to, because it's not only for their child's safety, but the safety and well-being of every other child and staff member going to that school.
That's right. And I am very aware, you know, just, we, we do have that experience or did have it with Hillcrest Community School where there was that one crossing where there was no lines at all or stop signs or anything. And, and I know how hard it is to get one of those signs there because it really took a lot of years, a lot of community involvement, the help from our this, school district as well, to finally get it there. And a dog to get hit by a car. But I have to say thank you because the police department have been very helpful, kind of coming to that corner, you know, right at the beginning of the, of the day and towards the end of the day, just to make sure that the parents that are coming and going, they slow down. Because like you said, there's still people who will go really fast. Thank you.
Director Corman, thank you. With no other comments forthcoming, I would remind you that as the, as Mr. Kaufman had said, this is built in with some time for, some further consideration. And we, we will have some other considerations being brought forward in terms of financing options. And so the board has that opportunity to have some further conversation. And with the suggestion here that there matters that would, members would prefer not to, to voice in a, a public forum, we do have the authorization to meet privately as well. We can have a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing specifics of security arrangements. So that may also be on our, our upcoming agenda as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very rewarding. Appreciate the time spent and a very good presentation here tonight. Our next item is listed on our agenda is financing plans. And Rod Zipkovich is going to be leading that discussion along with Gary Olson coming back to the table again. And we look forward to learning what we're opening up with this topic of financing plans. Rod.
Chair Calliver, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. We're back here tonight with Gary Olson, our financing consultant to help the board of an overview plan for both the safety and security and also the technology. We are not looking for anything formal from the board tonight, but we'll be coming back on May 15th to look for more of a decision from the board. Whenever you go into projects like, a district goes into projects like the technology and safety and security, you have really three different steps to it. First, you have the program area that needs to look at what the district's needs are. And you saw from your present, the presentations from John Weiser and from Rick and their consultants and support that they have costed out and kind of came up with what their program plans are. They've worked with me throughout the process to get a, a good understanding of that. That kind of leads us into the second part of the process, which concurrently, I was working with Gary and Ellers to come up with how are we financing some of these plans? And how would we be able to do that? And Gary and I have been working with that and, and that's where the majority of our presentation tonight, or Gary will be presenting tonight, are the options that we have. The third piece is communicating to staff, public, what our plan is of all those three stages, of explaining the program that we're looking at, explaining the cost, and then how are we going to finance it? So kind of looking at overall process, we're bringing to the board tonight a first look at this information. We're, we're going to Citizens Finance Advisory on, on May 6th to give them Rick's presentation. They've already seen John's presentation. And then we can also talk to them about the financing option. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Gary to give a little background of what other districts are doing and, and what his recommendation is for us for the opportunity to finance this program.
Before you go on, I want to make sure the viewing public understands this. When you say John's presentation, he's talking about the technology plan that's been proposed by John Weiser, our technology director.
Mr. Chair, Superintendent, members of the board. Districts throughout the state struggle a little bit with technology. You don't, you, you don't want to sell bonds, 20-year bonds, and to buy computers that are going to last five years. So, you know, districts are always looking for ways to match the financing tool with the asset you're trying to purchase or the things you're trying to, to finance. And what we see throughout Minnesota is the biggest use for this, and we've worked with a number of districts, and your district already has done this to a certain extent, is something called a capital projects levy. When it was originally created a number of years ago, it was called a down payment levy. But, and the idea when it was first created was that a district could levy for four or five years, build up a down payment, and then they'd have a down payment on a, on a, on a big capital project. Nobody ever used it for that. And what districts became aware of that it was a great way to fund technology especially. Computers, software, infrastructure, where you have a regular cycle where you need to replace that equipment. But at the same time, so you want a regular source of revenue. And so the way a capital project we're levying works, if you're not familiar, it works basically a lot like an operating referendum, where you go to the voters and get approval to levy a property tax. And so you have an annual stream of revenue that comes in each year based on what you've asked the voters for. Right now, you're, you have authority for about $2.7 million, and that's what you've been doing. And if you look in the, most of the metro districts, a lot of, most of the suburban metro districts do take advantage of the capital projects levy. It's not as, not as wide known out in rural Minnesota, a lot of those districts have not yet jumped on that bandwagon. But it's like an operating levy, but for capital use rather than for operations. Theoretically, you could use your operating, your operating referendum to do that, but there are caps on your operating referendum. And as your needs for operations grow, you don't, you don't want to limit your ability to maybe, or box yourself in so that you can't, if you use all that operating referendum revenue for funding technology, then you need some real operating revenue, you kind of box yourself out. So this is, you know, kind of a specific referendum specifically for capital projects. As we've looked at this, we've looked at this in combination of a whole bunch of things. We're looking at this, how does this fit in your financing plan with the alt facility bonds that we just talked about and the alt facility pay-as-you-go levy? How does that fit with your operating referendum? How does that fit with a lot of these, you know, how do all these things fit together to try and say, okay, we can do this and by, by moving some stuff around and having some flexibility in certain areas, do this without a property tax increase? And so that's, that's, that's the goal here. And we've built a model that we're comfortable. And the reason we can do that is we have flexibility in terms of that alt facilities, we can adjust between the pay-as-you-go levy and the bond issue. If we sell more bonds and do less pay-as-you-go levy, we can keep the tax impact down a little bit. So we have that opportunity to adjust between those, between those two. And as we go along with your long-range plan, every couple of years, every year, we'll be looking at that pay-as-you-go levy. And every couple of years, we'll be looking at, should we be issuing new bonds again? And how does that fit in your overall levy plan to keep that, that property tax stable over time? In addition to that, we have one refunding that you saw today, that you're going to be authorizing, you authorize that we'll be selling next month, that will save your taxpayers and bring taxes down. A year from now, in the fall of 2014, you'll have another one of your big building bonds that will be available to be refunded. And the following year, in 2016, there's a third issue. And both those are quite a bit bigger than this one. I think one is in the 30s millions and one is in the $40 million range. So those are going to be bigger. And again, what we'll do there is we, as we refund those, we can use those savings to offset property tax increases. The other kind of thing you've got going for you here is that when we built our model, we've been very conservative about growth assumption and value. As we took S and P around last week and toured the district, there's a lot of economic development going on in Bloomington. And then there's that great big thing called the Mall of America, that's a TIF district, that sometime in the relatively near future, I think 2016 or 2017, that, that's going to come onto the tax base. And that's going to raise up your tax base significantly. And they'll then take over a big chunk of your property taxes and that'll reduce the taxes on your homeowners and other property owners in your district. So we're kind of trying to balance all those, taking a look at all those different pieces. And right now, we haven't played the, we haven't even attempted to factor in the Mall of America. That's, that one we've just set over on the side. We've kind of looked at what can we save on the refunding? How can we mix and match the pay-as-you-go and, and alt facility bonds in a way that we can increase your capital projects levy to increase some technology dollars, also provide money for the safety and security issues, but still keep property taxes stable in the Bloomington school district? So that, that, that's the overall plan. And like I say, the, it's a kind of a, the, the alt facility, this whole thing is kind of a moving document and it's living and breathing and it, it's going to be changing on a regular basis. We don't know what the legislature is going to do in the next couple of weeks or two years down the road or four years down the road. So we have to be flexible. But like I say, I think we've got some flexibilities built into this system with the, with the mix and match of the, for funding alt, alt facilities, with the refundings coming down the road and some of those things that we're able to continue to provide some of these additional dollars and, and still hold the line on property taxes.
Gary, I wonder if you can share a little bit about the May date of why we're looking to get a decision made in May?
Okay. Part of the process, this will require, just like when you did the big building program back in 99, it requires review and comment by the Department of Education. You have to submit a review and comment and get that approved by the department before you go to the vote. Once you get, that can take theoretically up to 60 days. There's a whole number of other things you have to do between now and the election date. But if you're looking at voting on, in November at the same time as your school board elections, you have to have come to the final decision for that 74 days before the election. And before that, 20 days before that, you have, have, have to publish the review and comment. And that can take up to 60 days. So as you're working your way backwards, you can see that it can take some significant amount of time in terms of planning to get from the board making this decision and saying, yes, we're going to go ahead and meeting those statutory timelines and getting the approvals from the department and meeting those statutory timelines for the election process. So that's part of why we want to get this on the agenda and get it moving so that we can meet all those timelines for the, in time for a November election.
Also, as I mentioned, on the, the third point of communicating with, with parents and staff, to have a decision before we go to summer break, where staff has an idea and parents have an idea of things before the summer hits, it'd be, the communication out to all those groups beforehand would be helpful in the whole process for this fall.
A lot of times we see that where the, the district, you know, way ahead of the timeline that they need to notify the county of the election, want to get that public campaign going and, you know, start, start talking to the public about what you're doing, why you're doing it, why it's a good idea. And so giving you enough time to do that is important as well.
Yes, Director Hibbs. So Gary, you'll be at the CFAC meeting on the 6th? We can have him there.
I think I can make, if I, if I can't be there, we'll make sure somebody is.
I'll see you there.
Are there, yes, Superintendent.
I want to be clear about this. As the technology plan was being developed, you've been tracking the costs for the cash flow needs for the coming years for those plans. For safety, security, you've been tracking the costs and the cash flow needs per year. You looked at the two and you feel that based upon our ability to use the capital project levy, you think you can provide the funding needed per year with no increase in the property tax?
Correct.
And that's a concept that you still need to work out, but that's the concept you're working on so far, the numbers that you have. You still need to do some due diligence, but that's what you have. And there are some safety nets, insurance, so that in case things don't work out, you do have some insurance on the side to cover those variables.
That's the flexibility I was talking about in terms of the alt facility levy and the refundings and what's happened, what happens to property values, all those things.
And has this concept been used in, by other districts?
Yes. We, you know, and again, it's especially been used in terms of like the, the alt facility plan, in terms of, you don't want to sell bonds today and then two years later you said you need bonds. And you've got to figure out how does that fit? And it's better to have a, a long-term plan. Of course, like I say, the thing is you have to be flexible and be ready to kind of manipulate that as you go along to make sure you still meet your goals.
All right, board members, any further questions, Director Ablin?
Thank you. Would these be two different separate referendum questions or one big one?
It'd be one question. What it would be is it would be to, just like a, a referendum question, you would be saying that the current one goes away, what we have in the $2.7 million. And then whatever the number is that we're, we're looking at, it's somewhere in a, about a $6 million range. That would be what we've asked the voters. a $6 million range. That would be what we ask the voters to approve, which would be the combination of both the safety and security and technology.
Hi, Director Bartolata, did you have a?
That kind of answered my question.
Okay. Well, thank you for introducing those concepts for us tonight. Anybody else have any further questions or clarification you wanted this time? Otherwise, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing you again with detail. We have one more item on our agenda tonight before we get to our board member reports and superintendent report and that is a resolution to non-renew probationary teachers. This is our sad responsibility every year at this time as we are going about looking to balance our teaching resources and find a need to furlough teachers or non-renew, renew the, the contacts on those who are in probationary status. And our person at the microphone now is our, her resource is our executive director, human sources Bruce Pappas. And the resolution for us to adopt has been provided in the board packet. Director Hibbs, if you'd make the motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move the, the approval of separate resolutions to non-renew the following probationary teachers. Jesse Bakberg, Sarah Baumann, William Housa, Catherine Conat, Sarah Kialo, Jame, James Losi, Jane Samsel, Sarah Shupfer, Amy Schuler, Lisa Waddell Yuki.
The motions are made?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Be further resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 122A.40 that the teaching contract of the above name probationary teacher in Independent School District Number 271 is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2012-2013 school year, June 30th, 2013, and is not renewed for the 2013-2014 school year. And be it resolved further that the clerk of the school board shall issue written notice to said teacher regarding non-renewal of the teacher's contract as provided by law and that said notice shall be substantially the following form. Notice of termination. You are hereby notified that at a regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 held April 29th, 2013, a resolution was adopted by a majority roll call vote giving action that your teaching contract will not be renewed effective at the end of the school year, June 30th, 2013, and is not renewed for the 2013-2014 school year. Said action of the board is taken pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40. You may officially request the school board give its reason for the non-renewal of your teaching contract. However, such requests must be received within 10 days after the receipt of this notice.
Do we have a second, Lieutenant? Director Bartolata? I'd moved and seconded. Mr. Pappas?
Board Chair, Board Member Superintendent and members of the listening audience, as you stated earlier, Mr. Chair, that we, this is the time of year when we non-renew probationary teachers for, most of the reasons are for reduction in enrollment or change in programming, but also for performance. We do not identify in this resolution those that are being non-renewed for performance and those for, for numbers. We do this as a matter to, we actually have given notice to all of these teachers before spring break of the pending action of the board, so this doesn't come surprise to them that we're reading their names obviously without them knowing anything about it tonight. And also to give them the opportunity to pursue employment for next year because the school districts are already looking for teachers for the upcoming school year. So it's, it's always with a sad heart that I come and do this, but it's, it's one of the things we do to maintain our programs and maintain the quality of our education.
Thank you for that background. We need to take action by a voice vote, so let me begin at the far end to my right, Director Bergstrom.
Aye.
Director Ablin?
Aye.
And Director Bartolata?
Aye.
Director Hibbs?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Director Bush?
Aye.
And Director Corman?
Aye.
Let the record show that there was a unanimous vote then, all voting aye. Thank you, board members. Our next item is our, our board member reports. Would anyone care to make a report at this time? Yes, Director Bergl, Bergstrom, excuse me.
Okay, well, I had the opportunity to attend Bloomington United for Youth meeting. They are held on the, I believe it's the fourth Tuesday of the month. Also had the distinct pleasure and opportunity to attend the CCAC Awards banquet. CCAC is an acronym for Special Education Community Advisory Council. Also had another opportunity to go over to Washburn Elementary School and have some pancakes for breakfast. Here's a little thank you that the students and staff sent over there. That's for those of you that are watching and wondering, that's a picture of me showing the kids how to milk a cow. I don't know why they picked me, but I was, I was a good one, I guess. It's carnival time. Was able to attend Hillcrest Carnival, went over to Ridgeview's Carnival and was also at West, Westwood's Carnival and had some great treats over there, a giant slice of pizza at Ridgeview and some fabulous mini donuts. Westwood, I had, I was able to track down a diet caffeine free soda for my wife. So carnival time, make sure you get out there and, and participate. I want to say thank you to all the volunteers that helped make those carnivals possible, that helped make the carnivals possible. We just really couldn't do it without you guys. So thanks again. I see some of you sitting here in the front row.
Thank you, Director Bergstrom. Are there other reports? All right then, Superintendent Fujitaki?
Yeah, thank you. Two reports. First, Valley View, they have a new addition, which would be the early childhood classrooms and family room. We're going to have an open house for that and it's going to be on May 7th at 10:00 a.m. Commissioner Casilius of MDE has agreed to be there for that open house and we've invited a number of other dignitaries. The public's welcome. The other celebration is with Westwood Elementary School. They've been awarded the MSB School of Excellence Award and they're going to have a celebration on May 17th at 1:15 at Westwood Elementary School and the public is welcome. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki. Is there any other business a member would like to bring to the board at this time? Hearing none, we're at the end of our agenda and meeting is adjourned.